DATV and the Greater Dayton Area League of Women Voters present Meet the Candidates, your chance to learn about the candidates running for office in the November election.
Hello, I'm Patty Skilken and I'm a proud member of the League of Women Voters of the Greater Dayton Area. Today, I'm talking to candidates who are running for the Dayton Commission. We're going to give each candidate -- let me tell you a little bit more about the office first. It's a four-year term and the salary is $38,882. That's their salary. We're going to give each candidate a couple of minutes to tell you a little bit about themselves, then we're going to do some questions and we'll give them a little time to do a wrap-up, okay? Let's start with Darrell. Darrell, you've got two minutes to talk to the voters and tell them anything you want to tell them.
I'm Darrell Fairchild. I'm running for Dayton City Commission because of what you see and know. Our residential neighborhoods need work. We have a great opportunity to revitalize our neighborhoods and make Dayton all it can be. And to do so, we could address two of the important issues that we have as challenges in our community. A majority of our residents don't feel safe in their neighborhoods and likewise, a majority of our families don't feel it's a good place to raise a family. Revitalizing our neighborhoods will solve those issues and to do so, we need a champion and a plan. Think about Tony Capizzi. When he first started talking about bringing minor league baseball to Dayton, people thought he was crazy. But he persisted as its champion. We got a plan and now we have an incredible asset. Likewise, Mike Urban was an early champion for downtown. In 2010, we adopted a plan and now we're seeing significant revitalization in downtown. For our residential neighborhoods, we must do better. We don't have a comprehensive plan. The last plan was the 2020 plan, which was adopted in 1999 and hasn't been updated since for our residential neighborhoods. That's remarkable, given all that's taken place in that time, especially the housing crisis. So, we need a champion, we need a plan, and I believe we can do better. Since 2010, we've spent $18 million on demolition and without a plan, it doesn't look like it's made a significant impact. We must do better. I'm a lifelong Daytonian. I'm the manager of Chaplain Services at Dayton Children's Hospital. I'm a father, I'm a proud parent of a second grader at a Dayton Public School, and in my spare time, I like to handcycle, including completing my eighth Air Force Marathon this fall. I'm Darrell Fairchild and I'm committed to revitalizing our residential neighborhoods.
Thank you, Darrell. Jeffrey Mims is our next candidate. Jeffrey, same deal, you get two minutes to tell the voters whatever you want to tell them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Jeffrey Mims and I have spent probably more than 35 years of service to my country as a Vietnam veteran and to my community. As a teacher and a coach, committee activist for decades, as I mentioned, to address the needs that we have in this particular community. You know, way back before I even thought about being a city commissioner, when I was in Vietnam, I looked at some of the challenges of just basic services that individuals were lacking in that particular situation. And I thought those things were deplorable. Now, this was, of course, some time ago. As I began to -- my career, as far as the city of Dayton is concerned, I looked at how I could use my experiences as a former teacher, as a former coach, as a person who has mentored African-American males throughout all the region high schools for the last 42 years. I looked at how I could help those individuals identify the things that they could do to make their positive contribution to their community. As we talked over and over again about what is happening not only in Dayton, but what's happening in their respective neighborhoods, we've talked repeatedly about how we can use their collective strengths, their collective talents, in terms of making a difference as far as society is concerned. I am a graduate of Central State University, where I'm also the recipient of the Hall of Fame Achievement Award. I'm also a graduate of Wright State University, where I have my degrees in art and industrial technology. And I have had a major degree of information and training from the University of Dayton in terms of how I can make great things happen as far as collaboration on a national, state, and local basis through education, through industrial technology, as well as how we can manufacture the best products we can as far as our city is concerned. Thank you again, and I'm Jeff Mims. I certainly appreciate your vote. Give me a chance to go back, continue the great work that we've done to make Dayton a all-American city.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next candidate, there are four candidates, by the way, running for two open seats. Our next candidate is Shanice Turner-Sloss. Shanice, same deal, you have two minutes to talk to the voters.
Yes, thank you. My name is Shanice Turner-Sloss and I'm a candidate for City of Dayton Commission. I'm a proud Daytonian. I am also a graduate of Dayton Public Schools. I believe in the resilience and the perseverance of the city of Dayton. I have graduated from Fisk University, receiving a bachelor's in political science. I also have a master's in administration. I also am a former employee of the city of Dayton. I worked on many of the city's initiatives, many of their community and economic development projects. I manage the states and federal funds for the city of Dayton. And what I know is, there's a void in our community. And what I know is, we have to do a better job. We have to have intentional leadership. We have to have leadership with a vision for all of Dayton. And what that takes is a balance. We have to do a better job. We have to make our residents, our residential neighborhoods, a priority. We have to make sure that we hear and we address the needs and the concerns of all of our residents. It takes innovative, creative thought. It takes new ideas. It takes fresh blood. It takes new leadership. And under my leadership, I know that we can make the changes in the city of Dayton. With my block-by-block strategy, we will go in and assess the needs of our community block by block. We will implement new policies, new programs, and we can make the changes that we need in Dayton to transform our community one by one. I'm a mother, I'm a wife, and I am a daughter of a Daytonian. And I know that Dayton is not what it once was that I grew up in. And I know we can do better, and again, it takes new leadership. I ask for your support and your vote on November the 7th.
Thank you, Shanice. Joey, last but not least, two minutes to talk to the voters.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'll say thank you to the League of Women Voters. You always do a wonderful job at this forum. Again, I'm Joey Williams, Dayton City Commissioner, and I'm asking for your vote on November the 7th. Certainly, I am very pleased with the progress that we've made in the city. For all objective observers who are paying attention, anyone can see the progress that's going on in the city of Dayton. With that said, there's obviously more that needs to take place, and that's why I'm running for reelection. While I'm very proud of the progress that we've made certainly downtown, we've made on jobs, our unemployment rate is down to 5%. So, we're increasing the number of jobs. Very pleased with all the different accolades we receive and where we manage our finances. Certainly pleased at our Pre-K initiative. We're doing a lot of positive things and we're getting a lot of compliments for that. However, it's very obvious that some of the great things that we see downtown, we want to see go more into the neighborhood. So, that's been a key focus for the city commission in the most last 12 to 24 months because from 2009 to probably 2012, we were dealing with the recession. We were actually in a survival mode. Many cities you've probably heard of, including Detroit and Michigan, had to file for bankruptcy while Dayton was actually getting increases, improvements on our ratings, our bond ratings. So, we're really proud of what we've done in the past, but we really see an opportunity for this team that we have together to continue to move forward. So, I am definitely asking for your vote on November 7th. I thank you for your past support and I'm asking for it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Okay, now, we're going to get down to the meat and potatoes of our discussion today. We're going to start this time with Jeffrey. Jeff, first question, if elected, what will be your number-one priority and your biggest challenge?
Man, that's a great one. Excuse my voice. It happens early in the morning with this sinus issue. But, you know, first of all, you know, the biggest challenge is helping people understand the challenges that we have associated with how we can take the resources that we garner from downtown and put those resources into the city. And we've looked at, I mean, into the neighborhoods. We've looked at our budgets and while 50% of our money in our entire budget comes in and is generated from the downtown and the city employees, we look at, not city employees, but downtown and all those individuals who pay income tax. Let me rephrase that. And we spend 75% of our total budget in all of the neighborhoods. So, when we look at how we address these issues, making sure that individuals are clearly understanding how those dollars that are generated there make a major difference as far as our communities are concerned. The big issue that we have is communication because there are so many great things that are happening in downtown Dayton and through the communities, as Commissioner Williams mentioned. We seem to have a problem in making sure those things are clearly understood by residents that we have. When we look at what's happening in the Wolf Creek area, the housings around those particular areas, the Westwood area, when we look at the issues in terms around the Roosevelt School and buildings there, we have apartments that are going on all over the place in terms of Wright-Dunbar projects, we have Choice Neighborhood projects. So, we have tremendous things going on, but our biggest issue, I think, is how we communicate the successes that we have and then also how we work effectively with making sure that we have a stronger partnership with the school system and helping them move along with us as well. Because there's no great city that has a poor school system and there's no great school system in a poor city. So, we go hand-in-hand in terms of how we work together in those projects.
Thank you, Jeff. Shanice, it's your turn. If elected, what would be your first priority or your number-one priority and your biggest challenge?
Thank you, Patty. Thank you for that question. So, my first priority will be to revitalize our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods need attention. We have far too long neglected our neighborhoods. And here is the question and the answer at the end of the day that we really need to sit down and have a conversation, an intimate conversation about. We need to see the results. We have not seen the results in our community. We need to build the morale in our community and we also need to change the perception in our community. And how does that start? That starts by addressing the concerns intimately in our neighborhoods. And then, when you talk about all of the development that we've seen in downtown, we are ecstatic about the development downtown. We have seen the city of Dayton grow like never before, but we have to have a balance. We do not currently have a balance with our resources. We need innovative, creative thinking. We need to implement new policies and programs so, again, that we can see that balance. We need to look at different initiatives such as a community benefits agreement that says that is a means for us to leverage a lot of our development downtown into our neighborhoods. That will be my first priority is to make sure that we address the concerns in our neighborhoods. We have to have a holistic approach. We have to have a comprehensive approach. And that takes communication and intimate thought and intentional thought with our community as a whole. We need new leadership with a vision. When you address the concerns and the issues in our neighborhoods, you spark new entrepreneurship. You spark new businesses. You spark economic development. You bring about a new change in the community. You can transform the city of Dayton one block at a time, but it starts with our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Shanice. Joey, your turn. If you're elected, what would be your number-one priority and your biggest challenge?
Yeah, so, the number-one priority for me, and we've been making it very clear for, again, probably 24 months or more, as we saw ourselves really starting to move out of our economic crisis and starting to see some progress economically, is we have been working very hard to make sure that we pay more attention, have more resources go to the neighborhoods. And in fact, that's already occurring in many respects. Commissioner Mims mentioned the fact that we gain approximately 50% of our income tax from downtown. However, 75% of that number goes out into the community, into the neighborhoods. So, we already have sort of an imbalance, if you will, of dollars that go from downtown to the neighborhoods. Now, the challenge would be, can we even do more? Can we try to put more into neighborhoods? Which I think we can and we're working on that as well. But I think that that's the challenge in terms of, you know, what we need to do is we also have to keep the momentum going, though. Because of the great resource that downtown provides, we need to make sure that downtown continues to strive while we continue to reinvest dollars that we get from downtown into the neighborhoods. Again, that's something that we've been working on, we've gotten a lot of accolades for, and we want to just make sure that our citizens feel that effect. Some of the things that we're doing specifically in the neighborhoods that a lot of people are happy about is, we have a citizen's initiative to reduce gun violence. We have a community police council. Those are things that we're working on directly in the neighborhoods to try to improve safety. We also are repaving roads. Approximately 60 to 70% of our roads will be repaved over the next eight years. We're investing more in our parks and recreation system. All these things are being very helpful and they have a direct impact right in the neighborhoods. I would encourage you to please go to my website, joeydwilliams.com. Again, that's joeydwilliams.com, and you will learn a lot more about some of the initiatives that we have in the city. You'll also learn a lot more about myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Darrell, you're up. If you're elected, what would be your number-one priority and your biggest challenge?
My number-one priority, again, would be being a champion for our residential neighborhoods and being persistent until we have a comprehensive plan for our neighborhoods. Without a plan, we don't know how to focus, we don't know how to prioritize. We're doing projects in individual neighborhoods, but we don't know how they fit into the broader scheme. And in doing so, we miss opportunities. So, I would focus until we got a plan and once we get a plan, then you can have a budget. You know, we need a solid analysis of what the blight would cost to be removed, but that's only a fraction of what we need to revitalize. We need a big vision to understand what we can be in terms of our residential neighborhoods. We don't have a current analysis of what the blight costs. Recently, the commission cited a figure from seven years ago that was $25 million. We spent $18 million already to demolish blight and no one believes that we're $7 million away from having it cleaned up. And additionally, we need to have an analysis of what it's costing us to maintain the blight in terms of fire runs, police runs, decreased property values, lost revenues from property taxes, and the demoralization that some of our residents feel and the lack of a sense of community in their neighborhood. The biggest challenge, I believe, is that we don't have the vision and the leadership to really cast that vision that we need for our residential neighborhoods. We have some significant needs in our community. We're number four in terms of the nation in terms of food insecurity. We're number two for families with children with food insecurity. We have too many of our families living in poverty, many of them who work full-time and work doesn't pay for them. And so, we need to work to get the economic opportunity so that they can have the means they have to support themselves. So, the most important thing is to revitalize our residential neighborhoods and we have to get away from this either-or thinking. People want to talk about numbers around our downtown and we need to move away from that kind of thinking.
Thank you, Darrell. Shanice, we're going to start with you this time. Because the city has so many financial challenges, do you think businesses such as Premier Health, CareSource, Norwood Medical should get fewer tax breaks? You have two minutes to answer.
I think we need to have a balance. Again, we need to look at different initiatives. We need to look at other neighboring municipalities to study best practices so that we could, again, to address and to develop and adopt best practices that meets our community needs. We have to, again, look at community benefits agreements and having the means in place so that we can leverage our funding. We need to also have a means of how we're actually using the current dollars that we receive from the state as well as our federal dollars. How do we make a true impact in our community with the few resources that we do have? How do we strategically use those dollars so that our neighbors as well as our residents, our community as a whole, can really see the impact of how those dollars are being used? We need to make sure that our city staff has the tools and resources that they need so that they too can address the city as a whole and the needs that we have in our community. So, I think that we have to definitely have innovative approaches. We need to study best practices and we need to definitely have a plan in place so that we're able to use our dollars responsibly and that we can actually see the impact and the results of the dollars that we do have. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanice. Joey, how do you feel about tax breaks for some of these large organizations?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. It's something that certainly I have had to deal with for a long time. When it comes to tax breaks for businesses, we have to consider what does the city, what do the residents, what do the neighborhoods, what do individuals get in return for tax breaks? So, often what we do is we do an analysis and we say, how many jobs are going to be created? From those jobs, how would that benefit our community and how would that benefit, of course, our general fund? So, we usually want to see at least five, 10 times the leverage in terms of, if we put a dollar in, we want to see five or 10 times the return when it comes to, when it comes to the city. And it's really important also that, again, that it creates jobs. So, sometimes you'll see a company that receives some type of a tax break, but those tax breaks are only given because of a commitment to bringing jobs. We also monitor that. And if, in fact, they do not bring the jobs, they will not be able to get any more type of incentives such as that. But I do think that it's a case-by-case basis and at the end of the day, we're trying to look out for the city. And I would say that one of the good things, if you go to the state auditor site, you will see a review of all the cities in the state of Ohio, and you will see Dayton, Ohio at the top. We are in the top of all cities in the state in terms of how we manage our finances and we actually are a model. So, in reality, cities actually come and use us as a best practice because we have done a really wonderful job managing our dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Darrell, it's your turn. How do you feel about those tax breaks?
Well, I think that we have to recognize that there's a broader context around those tax breaks and that we are in a region where municipalities are pitted against one another to try to attract businesses and so, we need to be competitive and do what other municipalities and jurisdictions do to attract businesses. Having said that, I think we missed a great opportunity a year ago when Commissioner Foley was raising the issue of looking at how we might look at a more regional approach to our governance system. The plan he had, I wasn't in agreement with it, but the conversation got shortcut and set back. And at some point, we need to have that conversation so we can do economic development in a way that helps everyone pay their fair share and doesn't pit jurisdiction against jurisdiction. Additionally, in Dayton, we need to be careful with the resources we do have because there are places where we have squandered resources. We paid twice for the demolition of the Dayton Daily News, which added additional $1 million onto the cost of that project. We, I hear from IT professionals, particularly those in broadband, who tell me that we have a fiber-optic resource in the city that's worth $1.3 million a year if we would simply lease that capacity out to a business entity. We just had to give back $477,000 of HUD money because we missed the deadline. And there was a report from the city did with the United States, with Wright-Passan Air Force Base, that said that one of the things we could take advantage of was hub zone created businesses, hub zone qualified businesses. And we've let that recommendation sit on the shelf and not done anything with it. So, there are places where we can do better with the resources we do have and we must do better.
Thank you, Darrell. Okay, Jeff, taxes, good, bad. Give us your thoughts on this issue.
You know, I've got a lot of experience in terms of dealing with the tax dating issues by being a government relations person with Dayton Public Schools. And we have some similar issues in terms of how you weigh, and also a board president. How do you weigh the tax breaks for, as Commissioner Williams talked about, the additional employees in terms of jobs and what happens? And by the way, Dayton is number-one in job growth in the region. So, all the kinds of things that we're talking about that's happening downtown, clearly, we're moving in the right direction when it comes to that. So, when we look at the partners, some of the partners that you mentioned, for example, like CareSource and Premier, those companies make tremendous, tremendous investments into our community, not just from the aspect of employment, but they also make investments with the United Way, with different things, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. They have co-op programs at times with some of our students as far as the schools are concerned. There are millions and millions of dollars that while they don't necessarily pay those in terms of taxes because of the abatement, but they are good, good community partners and they make tremendous investments throughout our region. Those are the kind of things that I think is clear or needs to be clear as we understand how we weigh those situations. And certainly, we do have to do those things on a case-by-case basis, but it's obvious with our job growth, it's obvious with the kinds of things that Commissioner Williams had mentioned in terms of how we manage our dollars, it's clear that we're moving along the right direction.
Thank you. All right, this time, we're going to start with you, Joey. It seems like you can't even turn on the television anymore without seeing something that was videoed on a police body camera. It's my understanding that Dayton is not pursuing that at this time. Should they be? What are your thoughts on those cameras?
Yeah, actually, we've gone through a great, I'm sorry, actually, we've gone through a lot of analysis around body cameras and we have studied that intensely. And what we've come to is, we're still kind of looking at that. The issue is that there is a tremendous cost to that. And as we've talked about throughout this panel so far, managing our dollars is a key component to make sure that we can reinvest in our community. So, what we've been doing is, we have cameras on the cars, so when a police comes up, you can see the camera will come up then. But in terms of body cameras, we're still trying to evaluate that. One of the biggest concerns is the cost of maintaining the tape. It's very expensive for cities to maintain the tape. So, while we have not put it completely off the table, we're still evaluating body cameras.
Thank you, Joey. Darrell, how do you feel about those cameras?
Well, I think we've seen that there's plenty of video that comes and the video really doesn't make a difference. And so, I think there's a deeper question there around the police and community relationship. We have some good initiatives that have been started, but I think we need to do better on that. I would give some credit to our police currently. There was one incident that happened in Dayton where a man died, but our police used all the best practices. They used their time, they used distance to try to de-escalate that situation. They actually positioned a police car with the camera to videotape the whole incident from the time that they could do so. And they used non-lethal means to control that situation. And so, I think the cameras aren't going to solve the issues we have and I think we need to continue to work to strengthen our community and police relationships.
Thank you, Darrell. Jeff, it's your turn. Cameras.
Cameras, again, we, as, again, Commissioner Williams talked about, we've investigated that and the cost right now is just not something that we think we should invest in. When we look at probably, maybe 10, 12 years ago, we really started looking at bringing back more community policing. And again, dollars continue to be a challenge with regards to that. So, we put together this community police council under the leadership of Commissioner Williams. And in that process, we bring together tremendous numbers of diverse citizens, from the clergy to business to the average person walking up and down the street, who are part of this whole served unit that talks about how we can identify and prevent the kind of challenges that our police have had in other cities and other nations. Those things are very important for us because the aspect of prevention is something that's very clear and very necessary as far as what we're concerned. How we identify and how we train our officers is something also that's very clear. We have invested, in fact, in a program that I'm starting this year with sort of like a junior police academy in one of our middle schools. And that's in cooperation with the city of Dayton and also with the Sheriff's Department. How do we help identify young men to become police officers and how do we help them embrace that as something that they want to do? Because we think community policing would go a long way if many of those members are actually members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Shanice, cameras, what do you think?
So, I think when you talk about community relations as it relates to police and their involvement in the services that our police department provide to our community as a whole and the residents, it's a very sensitive topic. It's a topic that definitely deserves caressing and given the height and the climate at the national level and the state level, it is a conversation that is dear to a lot of us and it is a reality that we all are living with. So, when you talk about the issue of cameras and whether or not it's something that the city and the leadership should partake in or more so invest in, that is a conversation that I think we need to have with our police department as well as our community. Again, I mentioned that we need to make sure that our city staff have the tools and the resources that they need to service the community. So, again, that is a conversation that we definitely need to have, but along that conversation, we've been talking about this issue for quite some time now. So, we need implementation, we need policies, we need directive action behind those conversations, and we need to start being reactive and to become more proactive. So, again, we have to align ourselves and to study some of the best practices and, again, to make sure that our city staff have the tools and the resources that they need so that we too can protect our officers, we can protect our constituents, our residents in the community. And then, along with that, it takes, again, intimate conversation and to find out And then along with that, it takes, again, intimate conversation and to find out and to have an understanding of what it is that is needed for our officers to feel safe on the street as well as our residents to feel safe on the street. So again, it takes a conversation. And then we have to also have a conversation about how we're using our dollars. How are we actually using our dollars? We just spent last week, the City of Dayton approved $500,000 for our parking lot redevelopment. So again, you talk about the use of dollars, how are we using our dollars to service our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Darryl, you're going to start this time. We touched briefly on this a minute ago when we were talking about what we would do, about revitalizing some of our neighborhoods. Obviously, downtown Dayton seems to be booming. There's new restaurants, new businesses, the whole waterfront thing. I mean, it's looking good. Regardless of where you live in Montgomery County, we say we're from Dayton. You know, nobody gets specific, oh, I live in Belleville, you know, some little community. We live in Dayton. We all care about Dayton. How specifically, now that we've got downtown on the right move, how do we specifically help revitalize the east and the west side neighborhoods? You have two minutes. It's a big topic for two minutes.
Absolutely. But it's more than east and west Dayton. It's also the North Main Corridor and we also have some residential neighborhoods out in the northeast and the far north. And so, again, we can't do anything until we have a comprehensive plan. And I will persist until we have that plan so we know, have a broad view. I don't know if you saw recently, but we have a master plan for the rivers now. And that's a very exciting plan. And when they show it, you can get very excited about what could be. And we need a similar plan for our residential neighborhoods. Additionally, in that river plan, there are neighborhoods that are part along those rivers. And it doesn't make sense to do development of those until we have an overarching comprehensive plan for all our residential neighborhoods. But, you know, one of the key things about our residential neighborhoods is when I grew up, people knew each other and there were thick relationships and people had a sense of community. When my father died when I was 16, there were church members and customers on my paper route, coaches, scout leaders, who were all there to help my family. And right now, if you go in our residential neighborhoods, there might be 20 families with children and they're going to 15 different schools. If you go to any neighborhood, the school becomes the center point of neighborhoods where families come and they meet each other and they're there not only for education but for athletics and music and theater and dance and social services and events. We don't have that in our neighborhoods. So I believe that we should be looking at all our elementary schools and we should be cleaning up those neighborhoods right around their four or five blocks and starting to help create the incentives to have neighborhood schools again. Until we have those neighborhood schools a clear asset in our neighborhood, we won't be able to re-nit the fabric of community that we really need in our neighborhoods where people feel safe and connected and excited. And so those are some of the specifics that I would do to revitalize our neighborhood.
Thanks, Darryl. Jeff, I bet you've got some thoughts on this topic. How do we get the neighborhoods as happy as the downtown area?
Well, you know, again, I mentioned when we talked about our number one problem, our number one problem continues to be communication in terms of how people understand what is actually happening. Going back real quickly in terms of, I was probably the primary instigator and the lead lobbyist for the project to build all new schools in Ohio, which gave Dayton a head start because I was a lobbyist for the Dayton School System in terms of director of the Government Relations. That $628 million project, which 60% of that was paid for by the state of Ohio, gave us a great opportunity to build all new schools in the city of Dayton. And it enhanced the neighborhoods because the value of people's homes grew substantially who had those properties around the schools. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, we have built, again, even more properties and more homes around those particular schools. Those types of things have to continue. While we look at making sure that the dollars that we're spending in these particular places are implemented in the best way possible, we also have to understand that 30 years ago, this problem started. This problem didn't start two years ago or three years ago or four years ago. We are in this situation because of companies and corporations that left Dayton, because of the foreclosure crisis where we were number one in the nation in Montgomery County as far as foreclosure crisis was concerned. We were number one in terms of job losses. And so we looked at those kinds of things that we have began to recover from at a faster rate over the last four years than at any other time in the last 30 years. So when we talk about what we have to do and what we need to do, we are clearly on the right track in terms of making those things happen.
Thank you, Jeff. Shanice, let's hear your thoughts on how we can improve our neighborhoods.
So again, we need a comprehensive approach, we need a holistic approach, we need to have intimate conversation about how we address those needs in our community. And so how do we do so? We go into our distressed areas. One of the reasons why I'm running with Darryl is because he understands the importance of investing in our neighborhoods. As he mentioned, we need to have an approach where we will build around our neighborhood schools. Well, key point, our neighborhood schools are in distressed areas. So if we start with our distressed areas, we have a conversation, we go in, we assess those neighborhoods and build out the issues that we need to address, whether it's aggressive demolition, redevelopment, rehabbing current and existing homes so that we can spark new homeownership, making sure that we have tools and programs in place to assist our existing homeowners. We have to do a better job than what we're currently doing. And when you talk about building value in our neighborhoods, it starts with having a conversation and building around the current structures that we have in place with our community schools. And it takes, again, a holistic approach, an approach that entails a conversation with the City of Dayton's Community Development Department. Here's a key fact, the very issues, the very statements that our current commissioners are taunting, I worked on those projects. I know firsthand how those projects work. I know firsthand the amount of leveraging dollars and what it takes so that we can see impact in our neighborhoods and how that we can really see the results so people can feel them and so that they can start seeing the value in their homes and they can start, we can start building the morale in our community as a whole. So again, I have the education, I have the experience, I have the practical experience where I worked firsthand on the very same projects that we're talking about today and as it relates to building our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Shanice. Joey, I bet you've got some thoughts. Let's hear them.
Yeah, my thoughts probably take longer than two minutes, but I'm going to really try and maybe I'll talk a little faster. I really think there's four pillars of a great city and it helps both downtown and neighborhoods and all, all over. And one, it's financial stability. Two, it's safety. Three, there would be jobs. And four, there would be activities for all our citizens, especially the youth and our seniors. These are four areas that I've worked very hard in and all of them, if you go check, you can find there's a lot of progress in each one of them. More over, and before I go through that, I want to say, everyone who spoke before me, I agree. I think that we all see the same thing, but I also want to agree with Commissioner Williams probably most of all because he said there's a communication issue. A lot of the things that the two candidates are talking about, the city is already doing. Could we do some things at a higher level? For sure. But we're already involved and we're doing a lot of those things. One would be, we have an overarching strategy for the city. We call it a green and gold strategy. And the green strategy is primarily around trying to tear down dilapidated homes, trying to do more with our lot links program, trying to do more with mowing of grass, community gardens, trying to green areas that need to be green. And then our gold strategy, of course, would be trying to do what was just mentioned here, partner with great assets in this community, whether that's business, whether that's our hospitals, whether that's schools, universities. And there's lots of successful programs you can look to from Genesis to the Phoenix Project that have all been very successful, they're already underway. So we all understand sort of the low-hanging fruit. What we have to do now is dig it a little deeper and I see the sign-ups, so I'm probably going to have to stop talking. But this is a conversation that probably could take an hour, but some of the obvious common sense things, the city is already doing and we plan to do a lot more. So I am encouraging to keep supporting this team, Jeff Mims and myself, Joey Williams.
Well, I wish we had an hour. This could go on, I'd like to hear more. We're going to now give each candidate a chance to make a closing statement. This is where you can talk to the voters directly, tell them anything you want to tell them, maybe answer a question that I forgot to ask and ask for their vote. We're going to start with you, Jeff. You're going to be number one this time.
Okay, I'll be number one the first time, but that's okay.
And you get it again.
Well, I'm accustomed to being number one. So that's a good thing. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. You know, as I started off, again, talking about my experience in terms of working with this community. You know, I grew up in this community. And I jokingly say that when I was two months old, born in Alabama, I rented a car and brought my parents to Dayton, Ohio. And I've not left since then with the exceptions of time that I was in the military. All my education has been here with Dayton Public Schools, Jefferson Township Schools, Central State, Wright State, UD, and even some time where I taught at Sinclair. I was going to say university because it seems like a university, but it's a community college. The fact that I've also raised my children here and they were also proud graduates, are proud graduates of Dayton Public Schools and have gone on to make, I think, more money than me, which is very happy for me because it saves my pocket, have grandkids that are here. The concern that I have is I want to make Dayton the kind of city it used to be when it was called the Gym City. And I have no other goal, no other purpose other than making this city the type of city that everyone will want to come gravitate to, bring and raise their families and stay here. You know, as Commissioner Williams talked about four pillars, I would add another pillar. And for those who know, because I am a former educator, the issue of how we partner continuously with the school district to make things happen from that perspective because as we're having more and more people move into Dayton because of the great things that are happening, our downtown area is expanding. It's not just staying still. So it's expanding. So pretty soon, hopefully, maybe all of the city of Dayton will become considered almost downtown because we want to grow and things of that nature. We want our citizens, when they move here and they have children, we want them to stay here. We want them to have high-quality recreational opportunities that we have and to do everything they can to continue to degrade job growth that we have and the investments that we have in the city of Dayton. Thank you again. Both are Jeff Mims, Joey Williams for Dayton City Commission.
Thank you, Jeff. Shanice, you've got a couple of minutes now.
Yes, thank you, Patty. I stated, my name is Shanice Turner-Sloss and I'm a candidate for City of Dayton Commission. We commend our current leadership for their service and their commitment to the city of Dayton, but we need to do a better job. We need new vision, new leadership in the city of Dayton. We have a struggle right now in the city of Dayton where there is two cities. We need to make sure that we have a balance, we need to make sure that we have development that we can see and feel in our neighborhoods. And we're not getting that right now. We need to have a means of developing innovative and creative thoughts. And again, as stated, as a former City of Dayton employee, the very same initiatives that we are talking about today that are beginning to develop, I've worked on. I've had, I have the practical experience as well as the education. And I know that we need to do a better job than what we're currently doing. And it takes new leadership, it takes vision and it takes a holistic approach. And so I'm asking that everyone to come out and vote, vote Shanice Turner-Sloss and Darryl Fairchild this November the 7th. Vote differently. Vote for a different change, vote for an impactful change, vote for a change that will put you, your family and your community and your neighborhood in particular as a priority. And we have to do that under new leadership. So please come out and vote and vote for myself, Shanice Turner-Sloss and Darryl Fairchild. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanice. Joey, it's your turn.
Thank you very much. I just want to say again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this together. I always enjoy this forum. And I want to ask the voters, please, on November 7th, please go out and vote for proven leadership and leadership where you have a track record of seeing things be accomplished. All four of us up here, we love the city, everyone here, I believe that wholeheartedly. But just loving the city is not enough. You want to vote for people who have a track record of success, a track record of getting things done for you, the voters. And so if you look back at our track record, you will see that we've navigated this city through some very tough times, as I mentioned before. Going through that recession was a very difficult thing. And now you look up and we're the envy of a lot of cities around the state and the country. I can't open a paper without getting or seeing another accolade for the city of Dayton. We're all American city, one of the best places to live, one of the most affordable places. Just this morning, in the paper, we read something, Dayton A, one of 17 talent hubs. We just keep them coming. And I will agree, though, we do need to do more to make sure that that goes to each one of our communities and our neighborhoods. And that's what we're working on. And again, we have a proven track record of the things that we work on, we get done. On a personal note, I just want to make sure to tell the voters, please go to my website, joeydwilliams.com. You'll learn a lot more about me personally. I think one of the unique things about me as a city commissioner, that I have a banker and finance background, and that's been one of the things that's really helped the city as we've navigated through some tough times. And I think that it's something that will be special, that will be needed on the commission moving forward. Again, I just want to say thank you to the community for always supporting me in the past. I love serving this community, really proud of what we've done. I'm going to ask you to please vote for both Commissioner Jeff Mims and myself. We will work very hard to move the city in a direction and continue moving the city in the right direction, I should say, that you want. Thank you.
Thanks, Joey. Darryl, you're going to get to have the last word here. You've got two minutes.
Patty, again, I would echo Commissioner Williams' comments in thanking you and the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. It is one of the best forums that is in the election cycle and we thank you for it. I would again echo my comments that our residential neighborhoods need work and we have significant challenges. We're number four in the nation for food insecurity, number two for families with childrens and food insecurity. The majority of our residents don't feel safe in their neighborhoods and the majority of our families don't think the city's a good place to raise their families. We must do better. I grew up with commissioners like Abner Oric and Dick Zimmerman, Bootsy Neal, Dean Lovelace. They were known for being in the community, being close to people, listening to their citizens and neighbors. You know, you could go up to Abner's shop on Wire of Lee any day of the week and go in there and tell him what you thought, and he would tell you what he thought, and eventually you might come to some common ground. We need that again. We need different candidates, different elected officials who are going to be close to the people and can hear their concerns. We've got neighbors saying, my residential neighborhood is falling down around me and it's literally falling down around them. It's more than communication because we know that the city doesn't have a comprehensive plan. The commission recently said they had a comprehensive plan. I asked to see it. I went down, they gave me a box of 40-some plans. And none of them included the gold-green plan that Commissioner Williams just discussed. You go on the website, you readily find a plan for the greater downtown Dayton plan, but there's not a plan for our residential neighborhoods. We need a plan and we need champions. That's why I'm running with Shanice Turner-Sloss because we will be champions for our residential neighborhoods and we will persist till we have the plan. And until we have that plan, we won't know how best to spend the dollars we do have to make a difference in our residential neighborhoods. I imagine a day when we get to that place when we'll see radical transformation happen in our cities. I'm Darryl Fairchild. I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl, and thank you, everybody. These are always a pleasure to do and we want to thank DATV. They donate their time, their equipment, their expertise to make this possible. These interviews are brought to you by the League of Women Voters of the Greater Dayton Area. And I have to give ourselves a little plug here. We are nonpartisan. We never, ever support a candidate or a party or oppose a candidate or a party. We want you to vote and we want you to know what you're voting for. To that end, our world-famous Voters' Guide will be available in all the libraries October 9th. Early voting starts October 11th. Please vote. We need you as part of the democratic process. Thank you and good night.